Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the April 2nd, 2024 Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please? You need to mute yourself, Mr. Slavin. Mr. Slavin, Mr. Slavin, Mr. Slavin, please mute yourself. Thank you.
All right. Tonight, present, we have Mr. Bessie, Ms. Whiteside, and myself, Jared Chadwick, and Mr. Slavin via Zoom. I can't see if Mr. Bowen is in, and Derek should be in shortly.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I don't want you to turn your back to the camera. Ron, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Residents' comments. Comments on non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes, and there will be no more than 10 minutes per meeting based on past practice. Select Board will not respond or comment. Anybody? Thank you very much. We'll move on then. We have the Wareham Garden Club Arbor Day Celebration is Tuesday, April 16th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Wareham Library. Wareham Garden Club, as you probably know, or maybe you don't, decorates virtually all of the town properties with great flowers. They do the, you know, the buckets on Main Street. They do different intersections, and it's really nice that they do that for us. The other thing that I will talk about briefly is that we got in the mail today from Serpide a call for at-large commissioners. An at-large commissioner for Serpide would be a unique opportunity for individuals who represent and understand the needs of historically disadvantaged and underrepresented minority and/or low-income populations in housing, economic development, and transportation planning processes, and other important areas to speak for those needs in the Serpide Commission. So, the nominee, we certainly would entertain any people who would like to apply, just email us at selectboard@wareham dot ma dot U S, and we will send you the information to apply. Community groups are defined as legal nonprofit corporation or association whose members are minority and/or low-income, or the governing body or advisory board of a public agency whose goals are reflected of the needs of minority and low-income people. Minorities are those defined by the Economic Development Administration as Black or African-American, American Indian and Alaska Native, Hispanic, Native American, and Asian. So, we in the New Bedford area are allowed to have two at-large. At the moment, there is one, and Wareham Falls in the New Bedford area. Those are my announcements. Mr. Jared Chadwick?
Yes, I have two. I've seen a lot of recent posts, well, I wouldn't say recent, I've seen a lot of posts over the, quite a while, on long wait times at Toby Hospital and staffing shortages. I met with the Massachusetts Nurses Association today. Toby Hospital ER nurses, actually Toby Hospital nurses are in the process of negotiating a new contract, which they are going to be looking for more staffing to adequately staff the hospital. Hopefully, we'll have some resolutions soon. I am working very closely with them, and I will keep the public apprised of everything that comes up. The other thing is, once again, I've seen everyone's concerns and complaints, obviously, with the rising costs of Eversource. You're not alone. I'm definitely included in that. I am in the process of meeting and talking to multiple state officials to figure out what we can do. I know that I've looked at other towns that have municipal electric, and unfortunately, there's no way we could even possibly do that because you're talking millions upon billions of dollars to even try and start something like that. But those other communities that do have that have, I think, anywhere from $150 to $200 bills a month. So, I am bringing a lot of those to the public, and I'm also bringing a lot of that information to state officials because I think the way it's going right now is a little absurd. Those are my two.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
Mine isn't so deep. It's a little more exciting. So, just, I'm sure everybody knows, but this coming Monday, April 8th, we will experience a total solar eclipse, something that doesn't happen often. We've had a string of eclipses here over the last seven or eight years, but this one is supposed to be, from what they're predicting, one of the largest eclipses, one of the most total eclipses that we've seen, at least in my lifetime, and they're not expecting the next one like this to be until 2044. So, if you're interested in seeing something cool like that, make sure you get your glasses to protect your eyes. They are being sold almost everywhere right now. So, you know, get them, go out and enjoy it. You know, if your kids like stuff like that, I'd get out and get out there with them. It's definitely something that we won't experience for a long time, and I'm excited to see it. And so, it's this Monday, April 8th, and I hope everybody gets a chance to go and take a look because it's going to be exciting.
Thank you. I just, I should have mentioned earlier, I just want to say thank you to the OBA for their annual Easter egg hunt. I think it took more than 32 seconds to gather all of the eggs the other day. Usually takes about less than a minute, I think, but it's always very well-attended, and it's a great community amenity, and it's free. And thank you very much to OBA and the people who donate the candy and the eggs and spend the time to get that for the town. Mr. Slavin, do you have something for announcements?
Not too much. Basically, the Taunton and a few other people have their own, what they call light power companies, which they've had for years that Jared was talking about. Even with their systems going and everything else, the costs have gone up substantially. And even with our energy aggregation program, the costs are a lot closer this year than they have been in quite a few years. We had a meeting with Serpide on Wednesday of last week on whatever source, and of course, they never really admitted to having any extraordinary expense increases, et cetera, which is not really the case. So, we're working on the county and the regional setup. I also mentioned on the chat that places like Damien's Pantry or Turning Point are types of places that could apply for that Serpide at-large, you know, commissioner as well. And that's about it for me for today.
Thanks, Mr. Slavin. We are going, we do have a special presentation at 7:15, but it's not 7:15, and all of our guests aren't here. So, Mr. Chadwick, I would ask for a motion on 8A, please. And the paperwork is all in order?
Yep.
Except, are you going to read, is it, yeah?
Yeah. I move for the renewal of the following annual common Vic license under the provisions of Chapter 140 of Mass General Law for the year 2024, as printed in the Agenda 1 and 2.
And those are subject to receiving all department approvals and the required paperwork?
Second.
No, I changed my mind. I can do that. Okay. Motion made in second to approve 1 and 2. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 400, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the following annual entertainment licenses, weekdays only, under the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 183A, for the year of 2024, as printed in the Agenda 1 through 5, providing that all the paperwork and approvals are in order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the following annual entertainment licenses, Sunday only, under the provisions of Chapter 136 of Mass General Law for the year 2024, as printed in the Agenda 1 through 5.
Yeah.
Yep, 1 through 5, providing all paperwork and approvals are in order.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve as listed on the agenda. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, I'll accept a motion on 9A, sir.
I move to approve the onset Bay Association application for the Harvest Moon Festival event at Prospect Park, Bayview Park, and Town Pier on September 28th, 2024, rain date September 29th, 2024, pending all department approvals and permission of the town administrator.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve as listed on the agenda. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes, and the Rusty Nuts Club participating.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to approve the onset Bay Association application for the Christmas in the Village event at businesses and parks throughout the village on December 14th, 2024, with a rain date of December 15th, 2024, pending all department approvals and permission of the town administrator.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve, maybe should be rain and/or snow date. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to approve the onset Bay Association application for Illumination Night Event Onset Beach on July 27th, 2024, with a rain date of July 28th, 2024, pending all department approvals and permission of the town administrator.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve as read. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so.
I move to approve the Wareham Little League application for the WLL opening day parade on 4/27/2024, rain date of 4/28/2024, pending all department approvals.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so.
I move to approve the onset Four Square Church application for Sunday praise services at the onset bench out on 6/30/24, 7/28/24, and 8/25/24, pending all department approvals and permission from the town administrator.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to approve the onset?
Only set.
Only set, all right, sorry. My apologies. Wigone vendor and medium fare temporary signs on 6/22/2024, 7/20/24, 8/17/24, 9/21/24, with rain dates of 6/23/24, 7/21/24, 8/18/24, and 9/22/24.
A second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
Yes, I just want to make sure that we're not approving or letting them think we're approving any signs on Route 6 and 28, the highway, that's state roads, we can't authorize approval on state roads.
We know that the application is only, it's limited now to four locations on town property. Thank you.
I just want to make sure because I have a tendency to put one on Route 6 and 28.
Right. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to approve the Wareham Garden Club temporary signs for WGC Arbor Day Celebration at the Wareham Free Library on 4/16/24.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you.
Thank you. I move to approve Wareham Garden Club temporary signs for WGC Garden Tour on 7/13/24/2024.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to accept a donation to the Council on Aging for $150 from an anonymous donor.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept a donation to the Council on Aging. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to accept a donation to the Council on Aging for $8,000 from the advocates or seniors.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept a very generous donation to the Council on Aging. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so.
I move to accept a $7,500 donation to the Wareham Free Library gift account from the Friends of the Wareham Free Library, Inc.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept a $7,500 donation. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Okay, gentlemen, why don't you go see if our guests are available? We're going to continue with the meeting. We do have the boys' championship basketball team here, or we hope many of them, and Mr. Bessie and Mr. Chadwick are going to be handing out the certificates that we have. And Mr. Chadwick is checking it out.
I hear some voices.
I hear some voices, too. We invited the boys, their parents and guardians, as well as the coaches, and so we're hoping that they will, most of them, show up.
I did see Coach Fanyel.
I did, too. It was exciting. Did you watch any of the game?
I watched, I watched highlights.
Did you?
Yeah, I watched highlights.
And what was exciting about it, Mr. Bessie?
They had a really, really, really good team.
Yeah.
Very sound, fundamental basketball.
Good.
They played hard this year. It was hard to, hard to repeat last year, and they did it moving divisions and facing tougher and, you know, making some of their own schedule and picking opponents that weren't necessarily the easiest. And then they got into the tournament, and anything can happen when you're in the tournament. And they played really well, had a couple of hard-fought games, had a close game, pulled one out in overtime.
Oh, yeah. Which one was that?
Was that either the game before the?
Playoff?
The game before the Final Four, I think it was.
Yeah, okay.
And to get them to the Final Four, and then, it's always tough to play on the big stage.
Yes, exactly. And the games were played where?
The championship game was at the Songus Arena in Lowell.
Apparently, we're going to reschedule?
Yes, we're going to reschedule due to multiple of the sports going on.
Okay. Well, I think what we're going to do is read the names anyway, because we have them. So, we have certificates for Coach Steven Fanyel, assistant coaches Darian Fernandez, Juwan Gamble, Jamie Sylvia, Aaron Baptiste, and Cy Barato. And then we also have certificates for Diego Mello, who is the captain of this great team, as well as Taj Lewin-Pina, Jay Stavars, A.J. Lopes, Aaron Coté, Chukwon Pittman, Jaron Pittman, Antoine Crossen, Kyle Susko, Amare Rose, Jace LaPointe, and Will Halloran. Congratulations, young men, and thank you very much. I know that Superintendent DeAndrea received a letter from one of the other teams congratulating him on the gentlemanly behavior and the sportsmanlike behavior from all of the kids on the team. So, that's really good news. Okay. Next, Mr., let's go to discussion and a possible vote to recommend action on annual town meeting warrant articles. So, we have the grid in front of us for that grid. No, we're going to do the annual, please, first. Right here. No, you go here.
Yep.
Okay. So, I'll accept a motion. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Now, most of these people have made a presentation to the Finance Committee, and we have chosen to watch those tapes or watch those meetings live, and we didn't think it was fair to have some of these people come in twice, so that's how we've chosen to do it this year. Yeah, we're going to do it. Favorable action, yeah.
All right. You ready?
Yep.
All right. I move for favorable action on Article 7, fiscal year 25 budget.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend favorable action to the town meeting. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick?
I move for favorable action on the Article 8 Emergency Medical Service Budget.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend favorable action on Item 8, which is the EMS Services Budget. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
I have to abstain.
Mr. Chadwick will abstain, and I will say aye, so it is 301. Next, sir.
I move favorable action on, favorable action on Article 9, Upper Cape Cod Regional Technical High School Budget.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend favorable action on the Upper Cape Regional Vocational School, Technical School. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 400.
I move for favorable action on Article 10, WPCF Enterprise Fund.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move for favorable action on Article 13, remove limit of three licensed marijuana retailers.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend favorable action. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just real quick. I feel that this needs to be rewritten, even though it's a petition article, I just wanted to state that I think it needs to be rewritten with a certain number.
Okay. The, there will be hearing held by the, or two hearings held by the Planning Board because in the article as submitted, it requires Planning Board comment. So, I would echo what I have said previously, there are many issues with the technicalities of the article, but we are entertaining the article for recommendation for favorable action. So, any further discussion on the recommendation on that motion? Mr. Slavin?
I have issues with the article as it's put together. I think there's defects in it, which has nothing to do with my comment, but basically, I'm not in favor of this article in all the way it's written.
Okay. Going to go for a roll call vote. The motion on the floor is for favorable action. Mr. Bessie?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Sorry, hit the wrong button. No.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
Myself, no. It is 040. We've already done Item 14, and Mr. Chadwick, I'm not going to ask you to go to the special. We populated this warrant. It is still open until 4 o'clock on this Thursday, but we're going to do as many of these items as we can, sir. Mr. Bessie, or Mr. Chadwick?
I move favorable action on the special town meeting Article 1, budget transfers.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend favorable action. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. I'm going to, how about you go for Items 2 through?
2, 7.
2 through 7.
2 through 6.
2 through 6, and then read them.
Yep. I move favorable action for special town meeting Articles 2 through 6. 2, fund parking program. 3, spring 2024 capital. 4, transfer of available funds. 5 is prior year bills.
Is there a second to the motion?
What about 6?
And 6.
I'm sorry. And 6, peg access receipt. 2, Wareham Community TV.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend favorable action. Mr. Slavin, do you have a comment?
No, you saw from the Finance Committee meeting, that's why you're going through those, that we don't have any year-end transfers, right, that we will be passing that over. So, I know you still do favorable action, but I think I wanted to give an explanation on that for anyone who's listening.
Okay, great. So, there is no, none to do, but it will be a passover, but, okay. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move favorable action for?
Do you want us to hold off on the union contracts, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, you need to hold off on them for now.
Okay. 8, the duty of the town clerk, which is an article submitted by the Bylaw Review Committee?
I move for favorable action for special town meeting 8, duty of town clerk.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend favorable action on the duty of the town clerk article. Any further discussion on that motion? Mr. Bessie? I'm sorry, roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
I move favorable action for special town meeting Article 10, Tremontale Remediation Project.
What about 9?
9.
10 and 9?
Wow, okay, yeah, sorry. I move for favorable action for special town meeting Article 9 and 10.
And 11?
That's fine, we can do that, too.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in second. 11 is the return of unused funds from completed projects for the CPC funds.
And harbor service permit receipts is 9.
Right. Any further discussion on those recommendations for favorable action on those three items? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes, my fingers getting tired.
Okay. We don't have too many more. Mr. Chadwick?
Do you want to just do the rest of them?
Yeah. May I have your vote?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Are there any of those that we cannot act on, Mr. Sullivan? I don't believe so.
Madam Chairperson, just, you got to read them out.
Yeah, I know that, but are there any that you would like us to hold on?
Madam Chairperson, could you read them out, please?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Well, we haven't made the motion yet.
Madam Chairperson, could you please read them out?
Oh, certainly. Okay. S12 is Sewer Number 1, Wareham Pollution Control Facility Aeration Blowers and Vehicles. 13 is the transfer of the McKinney Vento Funds to Transportation Revolving Funds. 14 is to delete several general bylaws. That's at the recommendation of the Bylaw Review Committee. S16 is amend the town charter. That has to do with the number of, that has to do with the timing of the town meeting. 16 is amend town bylaws regarding the Finance Committee members. That is an article to bring the number from nine down to seven members. 17 is amendment to the Wareham Wetland Protective Bylaw. That was a one-sentence add-in presented by Mr. Farady a couple of weeks ago. And 18 is state mandated real estate and personal property revaluation, which was presented by Jackie Nichols a couple of weeks ago.
And I think the only one, I don't know if all those have gone before the Finance Committee. I know the McKinney Vento has. I don't know about the bylaws or anything like that. I wasn't, didn't see them at the meeting, so, yeah, the revows, okay, McKinney Vento. And I think you've talked about the charter revisions as a board before. What was the one before McKinney Vento?
The aeration blowers and vehicle for the sewer.
I don't know that those, I know they've gone before capital planning. I don't know if that's gone before Finance Committee yet. I'd have to double check.
Okay. Do you want us to hold 12 out, then? That would be the, that one? 12?
We'll hold that off, yeah.
Okay. So, we'll, we won't do 12, which is the Wareham Pollution Control Facility Aeration Blowers and Vehicles, but we will do McKinney Vento, because we've heard that one.
All right.
I move favorable action of special town meeting Article 13, transfer of McKinney Vento Funds to Transportation Revolving Fund.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes.